Hello, we had a server issue that needed to be taken care of between meetings and it took our internet off for a couple of minutes.
I think we learned something from this last meeting that we can't book meetings.
We sure did, didn't we?
I think we've learned something else, which is we're going to be on Zoom for quite a while.
I think we have. Well, that that didn't come as a result of our meeting this morning, but yes, I think that came overnight, for sure.
I mean, there's a number of the committees have been, you know, understandably have been talking about when can we meet in person and say that the revelations about spread of COVID at the highest levels of the government, who are supposedly protected, you know, as much as possible should really put pay to that whole idea at this point.
Hey, Tim, are you going to do it twice today? You got two, you're up twice. You're logged in twice.
I am.
Bonnie, was that a black cat, by the way? Are we, do we all just get bad luck?
No, no, you're fine. He is, he is a, he's a faux tuxedo. He's not even, he's not even really a black cat. He's got lots of mahogany undertones.
So you say. Most black cats do have mahogany undertones.
Yeah, but he's, he's, no, he's, he's a very benign creature. I guarantee you. He's the peacekeeper in the household, among the cats, let me.
Where does, where does he fit in terms of the chronology of the others?
We have a 13 year old dowager. We have Luke, who is about seven, and we have a juvenile who is quite a year, a one year old who is quite the troublemaker.
Yes, we still need Rob.
Promote press to a panelist so that he can talk about the board's side of the.
Yeah, that would be good.
We still have two Tim Ritzers. Do you have another device that you're?
We still have two, yeah.
It's okay. I mean, we're not getting an echo or anything, so.
The other one, I tried to do it on my laptop and it failed. It said that I did not have the audio connectivity, so I jumped off it, went on my iPad.
Okay, it must be still open, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
I can see if I can close it down. Right, so I'm going to say.
Press, you got a haircut.
Yeah, I got a lot of them cut. Geez.
Did they leave anything or what?
Not much left.
You're gonna have to grow some facial hair like Andrew.
That's a little short.
I don't know, you know, Mr. Vandalis has had the most kind of taken off the sides of anybody lately.
I think he's ready to enlist in the Marine Corps.
Look, I, it's, it's long right now. I, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to get a haircut. I miss my military days.
This grows back, mine doesn't.
Well, we're still missing Rob.
His own hair. And so I have to go in and, you know, make sure that the back is even. So I'm surprised he allows me after I destroyed my son's hair when I tried to cut it when he was two.
Tried to cut my hair and almost took off my earlobe. We put a stop to that.
You were going after, that was the Vincent Van Gogh look.
Yeah, it was not good. You know, earlobes bleed a great deal.
They're well vascularized.
Yes, exactly.
Some of you may remember, you might have kept your mouth shut at the time, but early in the pandemic, I cut my eye. And it was fine at first, until I went to even it up, and then even it up, and then my eye got evened out for a few weeks.
I remember that.
Rita's been giving me haircuts just using the DeWalt, like number four on the sides and five on the top.
I just sent, I just sent Rob a text asking him to join us.
Oops, that's my bad. He, his doctor's appointment was taking longer. He was, he said he was going to try to join on the phone.
Okay.
I went to him on the phone.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, then we'll go ahead and get started. So today, the purpose of today's meeting is really to talk about incentives for, for annexation of the enclave areas within the city boundaries. And Press and Darren and Anne Marie and I have spent a fair amount of time this week talking about what's out there. And obviously, we know there are three potential enclave areas, one being the New Road group, and one being Hornkill, and the other being the Savannah Road. And each of these had unique characteristics. And we've primarily focused on, on the New Road ones, but they each have unique situations. And I think what we've learned is that the, the cost of providing the water and sewer to each of these developments or areas is, is different. And so they can't all be, while we could offer a waiver to all of them of a certain amount, it won't, it won't be result in them all having the same benefit because the cost of providing these services will be different. And so we wanted to bring you up to date on that. And then we need to think about how would we approach them. Some of them are more, would be more complicated than others and would require a lot more engineering. So Press, you want to talk to us? I don't know, is Darren going to join us as well, or are you just?
I just texted him before we started and I haven't gotten a response yet. So I don't know if he's tied up.
Okay.
I was hoping you would.
Yeah. When we spoke last week, or we talked about the idea that it would be about just shy of $10,000 for folks on New Road to access water and sewer based on impact fees and for water and sewer plus the boring underneath New Road. And that is a fee that I believe we still think is a solid number for New Road, but Savannah Road and Hornkill would have different impacts. You want to talk to us about that, Press?
Yeah, they, we have, we have impact zone, impact cost zones throughout the town because when you add sewer in one area of town, it has more or less impact than somewhere else. We, the impact fee is there to compensate people for the entire system. And the addition of additional flow to the system, you're taking out capacity of not only the mains, but pumping stations and the treatment plant and everything. And so we have different zones that reflect what their impact is going to be from one side of town versus another. And the numbers can vary significantly. So we just can't use one number for every place in town. It's probably going to be more coming from the far side of town, the north side of town than it is a closer to the treatment plan. So that's why we don't have the same impact fee at every location. As we said, the, the impact fees that were given last week for New Road are just for New Road and look like they're about, you know, eight to $10,000, I think it added up to be. But the, the board has agreed, as I think we mentioned, we talked about last week, that they're willing to allow that the upfront cost, the impact fees and connection fees, to be financed over 20 years at 2%, maxing out at 4% over the years if necessary. So that would apply to every location, but the, as I mentioned, the cost of each location might be different.
Right. So just to give you an idea of what the difference, why there's such difference, the sewer line already exists, the force main already exists, the water main already exists along New Road. In the case of Hornkill, from the edge of the, the end of the city, and Tim and I had this conversation earlier in the week, there is no, there is no infrastructure in the ground from Horn, from the last 10 houses on Hornkill. So that would require an entire construction project, much like what we did with Savannah, with Savannah Place and Highland Acres, where the street would be appreciably cut up and disturbed. And so there would need also then to be a rebuild of the street. And ironically, we discovered that Charlie, and Charlie's not with us today, in 2014 had provided Darren an estimate of what that cost would be. I beg your pardon? Charlie with us?
Yeah, I just promoted him. He was in there as a participant.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks. And Charlie, maybe you want to talk about what that, that whole estimate, if you heard what we were saying, about the, the end of Harborview and extension of services there because it was complete need to install all the infrastructure. And you provided that estimate to the board in 2014.
I did. I'm pulling it up so I can see it. I think with a complete street rebuild, wasn't it?
Yes.
Around $35,000 per?
Per household, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, that's, but that's for water sewer and the street rebuild, which is a really fair price when you, in comparison to what people in Highland Acres paid and what people in Savannah Place paid for just, well, in Savannah Place, it was just sewer and a new road. And they, they're paying something like $27,000 per EDU, per resident. And in Highland Acres, it was basically the same project, water, sewer, and a new road. They ended up paying $32,000 per resident, but that was after three quarter million dollar grant on the water side from the state. So if you weren't, if you didn't have that grant, it was going to be around $49,000 or $50,000 per, per unit out there.
And the Savannah Place folks had already paid some nine years ago to have water installed, so upfront, there was other costs. And I would caution that the number that, that you came up with 35,000 per household was a 2014 number, not a 2020 number.
Yeah, the other thing to remember about that estimate is, is that that was at a time when we were thinking, well, sort of what we did with Highland Acres is we took the services for water and sewer, sewer all the way to the homes.
Right.
And so that's included in that price. And we had communicated with Harry Caswell and got pretty, you know, pretty accurate pricing on that piece of it from the right away to the homes. So it's, it's a true cost to the resident, it's a true cost estimate to the resident. It doesn't leave that piece out like we sometimes do now where we're just taking the services to the right of way line.
Right.
Hey, Charlie, can I ask a question? Do you know, with respect to any of these projects or possible projects, what the cost breakdown is between the cost of the street redoing the street, which is arguably more municipal, and extension of the utility services, which is arguably more of a direct service to the homeowners? I mean, is it a 60-40 split, a 70-30? You have, you have any idea what that comes out to?
I, I do have an idea. Let's see. So for Hornkill, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud now, Bonnie. It's $61,000 for the street. And then the total project was, let's see.
390.
390, 390, yeah. So it's 61 divided by 390. That's roughly, you know, whatever that works out to be, it's 15% or something.
Exactly. So are you saying that you could subtract 61,000 from that 390? Is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, I just want to catch that. I mean, I really need to go back through and look at it because that 390 includes all project costs. That's the engineering and BPW's administration. The 61 is only the construction cost for the road.
Okay.
Right, it's 16%.
So you're, if 16%, you know, you, you back some of this stuff out. I mean, if you take out some of this, some of those things, it might be a little lower. But it was, I think it's just instructive to understand that roughly, roughly, and just looking at this one project.
Right.
It's an 85% direct benefit to the homeowner because services are being brought to that property.
Correct.
And at a 15%, I mean, the street is also a benefit, but it's more of a shared, you know, a, a shared asset, if you will.
And this is a street that would fit into the category of a light build street because if you go out there and look at it, there's almost no traffic except for those 10 or 11 houses that are at the end of it.
Right.
Unless they have a moving truck come in or some big delivery truck, there's really not much traffic back there.
Could, could someone on the call maybe provide some insight on to the criteria for the grant that the Highland Acres folks got and whether the Hornkill properties may qualify for a similar type of grant from the state?
So the way, the way that works is if we were to take, take the approach of going for state funding, we'd apply for state funding for both separately, for both water and sewer. It goes through a pre application and an application phase. And it's not until you're deep into the application review phase, phase that you find out whether the project is eligible for any grant money. Generally, in Lewis, we're not because it all has to do with the median household income of the people you're serving.
So it's impact rather than environmental impact?
Right.
Yeah, now what happened on, in Highland Acres was the state sort of got put into a corner where they had all this grant money to use on the water side. And they didn't have any other project to put it on because they were so late in the game that they gave it all to the Highland Acres project. And it was significant, three quarters of a million dollars. That, you can't count on that every single time. But they do review every project based on median household income and whether there's grant money available. The other thing that you can get and what the board has consistently done through the years is apply for planning and design grants that pay for 50% of the engineering costs related to the design. And that, that helps the homeowners out in the long run, too.
Yeah, thanks, Charlie.
And is grant money basically a financing piece instrument, or is it actually a grant with no requirement of payback?
So some, sometimes, and Press, turn on me anytime you want on this, but sometimes through Denrick, you get a grant. Oftentimes, the way they've been going about it now is, is that you actually get a loan. And then when the project is complete, they'll forgive the principal of the loan. So they call it principal forgiveness, which is, you know, I'm an engineer, not a financier. So it's, it's sort of, to me, it seems like a grant, but I know it's not, you know, by the letter of the law, it's not a grant.
Right. And are those grants typically available for individual homeowners, or do you have to have an HOA or some entity that would be the applicant or the beneficiary of the grant?
Those are, these are projects that only a public entity like the Board of Public Works can apply for.
Okay.
If the Board of Public Works administers all that in coordination with the state.
Okay, so the administration comes through the BPW, and then the benefit flows to the individual property owners. Is that correct? Thank you.
That happens, that's a really good question, Tim, but, but the benefit happens as, as essentially a reduction in what the cost would otherwise have been from the board.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how does that work on the street part?
But, but excuse me for interrupting you, but doesn't that benefit also trickle down to the homeowners, too, if in fact?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's just, yeah, it's just a pass through the BPW to, on its way to the property owner.
Yes, absolutely. I was just curious how, you know, it's, it's not like the money goes to the property owner and that they remit it. It's, so I was just curious about the mechanics.
Right, thank you.
A couple of things about the street, Bonnie, is that the street is always part of the total project that's, that the loan comes from the state.
Okay.
So any grant that you get, you know, would, would include some of that street, but also in, like in the case of Savannah Place, the city was able to procure some, I don't, I think it was CTF funding or something from.
Yes, Representative Smick gave them $90,000.
So that's a possibility, but you just never know until you get into it.
Charlie, I have a question regarding Hornkill and this portion of Hornkill, where it is outside the city. It's not a city street. I assume, I don't know who owns that street. I don't know if that's owned by the homeowners out there, or if it is owned by, it's not the county because the county doesn't own streets, is my understanding. Is that correct?
It's, as far as I know, it's a state unless somebody knows if there's an HOA out there. I don't think there is. So, yeah, you're right. In Delaware, well, at least in Sussex County, you've got municipally owned roads. And then if they're not municipally owned, they go straight to Deldot operated and maintained.
Okay. And in that case, let's assume for the purpose of this conversation that it is in fact a state owned road. Do you know, have, have you ever, have you, do you have any experience with transfer of ownership from state to city and how complicated that is? Have you ever done that?
I'm going to defer to Glenn. Maybe he has some experience with that more than me.
We did it recently for.
Island Acres.
Island Acres. And we did it for.
Savannah Place.
For Park Road.
We also did it for Savannah Place.
Yeah, I mean, I've been on the periphery of it.
Yeah, I know, but still, we're getting there. Okay. And is that just a matter of making a, in effect, petitioning the state, Deldot for the assignment? How does that, the right of way? How do you, how do you procure that?
Charlie, don't we have to look at the property records to, to make sure that this did get turned over to the state? Am I too quiet?
Okay. Way down.
I can hear you. There's a change of pace.
Yeah, my microphone will be coming in next week to, because this keeps happening. But, um, I, it, don't we have to look at the land records to make sure that it was assumed by the, the state? Because the complication in Savannah Place was that it was never turned over to the state.
Right.
It remained in the name of the developer.
Right. Mike Martin.
Yeah, there is some title search really. I guess you call it a title search related to that.
I think we need to be cautious about thinking about forgiveness going forward, given the status of the state's budget. I think the state may be more reluctant to give full forgiveness of, of loans or grants going forward, given the shortfall they experienced this year. Hi, Rob, glad you joined us. And that might be something we, we don't want to be too far out there with.
Well, and the forgiveness, again, is usually, in, in most cases, based on financial need.
Of course.
So i- if you can't demonstrate financial need based on the, the property owners that, that would benefit, I think it would be very difficult. I think Highland Acres was, was unique because part of that was the whole recovery money that they had to spend, wasn't it, Charlie?
Yes.
So it was, the, the likelihood of having that happen again is, you know, very, very slim.
Right. So that, you know, obviously, the Hornkill project becomes quite a different project than what we were talking about last week for all three of these, or what we thought we were talking about. And then you want to talk a little bit about Savannah Road and what those properties would be involved with, Charlie? I know you've done.
Are you talking about the ones that are on either side of the?
The ones going out, yeah. And it would be involved from Atlantic, Atlantic Drive out. And here we already have at least one signed pre-annexation agreement with the property that's immediately on the corner of Atlantic and Savannah. So he's obviously anxious to get involved at whatever cost he's involved.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's 16 parcels that lead from Atlantic Drive out of town to basically where the Ebenezer branch crosses. Anyway, on that side that we, that we're looking to serve right now with, actually just place a two inch force main in the ground on the high school side of Savannah Road to serve those 16 parcels. And that's part of a bigger project, the Savannah Road sewer extension that would consist of some gravity sewer that ties into the Savannah Place system. And all that's in the works, that design's actually 99% done. We do have the Deldot permit now. The last thing that needs to be done on our end is to procure easements from four different private property owners who have agreed to the easements. And I know the board's working on the paperwork to finalize those. That project is a little contingent on Senior Living and Dutchman's Harvest because they're such big users of that project that they really offset the costs significantly.
Do you have an estimate of what those, what those would cost?
What, for each one of those 16 EDUs?
Is it, is it a $200,000 or a $500,000 investment to get that force main and water line out there?
Yeah, the force main, you know what, I don't have those numbers on, on the tip of my tongue, but the, the two inch force main, putting that in the ground is really inexpensive, but what they would, it would require is that each, each one or, or two at a time would require what we call E1 individual pump stations on their property that would utilize that two inch force main as a system to get down to Donovan's Road, to the Donovan's Road gravity system. And then they would also be responsible for their downstream cost, what, what's going on in Donovan's Road, and also what's been already done in, with Savannah Place, because they're all part of that.
And when you say Charlie, excuse me, when you say they, are you talking about the developer of, who are you talking about would be responsible for that cost?
So those 16 individual parcels would be responsible for a share of it. Like in the case of the Senior Living, that developer's responsible for all the EDUs that are associated with that facility.
Right. And, okay, Press, do you know offhand what the, what the impact fee is for water and sewer anticipated in that, in that section of the BPW's area?
Well, I don't know. Charlie, you came up with it. Do you, do you know what that is?
On the water side, it's the 2,600 per unit. On the sewer side, I, I think it is $2,540, but please don't quote me on it today. I have to look up, look it up.
So it's the $5,100?
Yep, 51, 5140, yeah.
5140 per household?
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
Not bad.
But then would there be, would there be any additional charges? Would they, they wouldn't have to go under the road, so there's no lateral boring or anything expensive that we were anticipating on New Road. Is that correct?
We got to go underneath Savannah Road.
Okay, so that there would be the lateral bore again there.
Yeah, we've got.
Each of those would have, so each of them would have that cost as well?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. They have the cost of the pump station at their house, the cost, a shared cost of the force main that runs in front of their houses, and then shared costs of all the downstream sewer that they're tying into.
So the impact fees become a minor part of what the total cost would be?
Um, generally, yes. Yeah, they're, yeah, generally, they're a minor part of the overall. Like usually, like in Savannah Place, they're, they're paying $27,000 per house for all the capital improvements to serve them. But then they're paying 20, $2,540 for the, you know, the impact fee, which as Press, Press explained, it's for impacts to the downstream existing system.
Right.
Charlie, would the, would the Savannah Road crossing still be the small two inch diameter?
No, no, because we're bringing that two inch down and tying into a manhole right at North Atlantic Drive. And then it'll be a Jack and Boar, it's actually Jack and Boar underneath of Savannah Road with gravity sewer.
Charlie, let me take a minute and ask you about the right of ways you spoke about. I think you indicated that you have two or four property owners who, who need to sign right of way, you know, easements. Is that correct?
Four, yes.
Okay, four. And so there are 16 parcels on the south side of, of Savannah who would benefit under this program, under this, this study. Is that correct? And so are, have you already?
And so are, have you already have, the right of ways already been secured from the 12 other property owners? Or are we using public right of way?
Yeah, that's all in public right of way. That's in the Dell dot right of way, that two inch.
Okay.
Yeah, the four, the four other easements are more related to the work around North Atlantic Drive. So you've got an easement from what's now BB Medical Center's property that'll eventually be Dutchman's Harvest. You've got an easement from where the wine store is and the Lewis Diner, that property. You've got an easement from Dr. Anthony. I think they're the ones that have, they're on board with tying in quickly. And there's one other one too that's slipping my mind. Oh, from Henlopen Gardens. Because we're crossing a little sliver of their land with our, with our sewer work.
That tiny little sliver that's basically part of green, open space?
Yes, yes, and we've met with all.
The Dutchman's Harvest piece.
Yeah, and we've met with everybody and they've all agreed to it. It's just a matter of getting the paperwork signed and getting it recorded.
Okay.
And Glenn, that's being done through.
If you talk about incentives, like with properties like that, for example, who are already keen to tie in, what's compelling to them?
Well, private properties who have septic systems right now. Couple of things, I guess, Andrew. Depending on the condition of their existing septic system, if it's at the end of its useful life, they could pay anywhere from 17,500 to 30,000, depending on what the state would require for their new septic system.
So in this case, it's more a matter of where they are in their lifecycle of their existing plumbing essentially.
And the other thing is, and I don't have any data to support this, although I know there was a realtor out on Hornkill Avenue that shared this with us in 2014 when we were looking at serving them is that the property values go up roughly 20% if you're on public water and sewer. So take that with a grain of salt too.
Can I, can I just make a general comment about incentivizing here? I mean, to a certain extent, I think we're looking at this a little backwards. I mean, these are, there, there is an enormous benefit to being part of a community and to supporting a community. And what the, the people in these enclaves are getting, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting this is evil, but they're basically, and the Savannah Road is a little different, but they're basically free riding on the city's services, the city's police department, you know, the city's everything. And so, you know, you know, I'm not against the idea of incentives, although I have to say, I'm not sure I'm willing, we're in a position to vote on anything today because I need a, I need a grid. I mean, I need something that puts all this information together because we're getting it kind of scattershot and, and I, and we've got three distinct situations here. But you know, it, it is a privilege to be part of this community. And so I don't want this to sound like we have to pay people to become part of this community. People should be willing to be part of a community. I mean, I'm not against incentives, particularly where the, the burden is, is particularly great. But, but I don't want this to sound like, oh, oh my God, it's so terrible to be part of the city of Lewis. It's, there's a lot of benefits that come with being part of the city of Lewis and, you know, and there's a lot of benefits frankly that come from being part of, of a utility service like the Board of Public Works. I mean, getting away, I mean, if you, if you look back at, at the Highland Acres situation and the Savannah Place situation, I mean, those were situations like it sounds like with respect to some of these Savannah Road places where people were looking at having basically uninhabitable houses because of the failure of, of septic and, and problems with wells. So, no, I, I just want to put a little different perspective on what I think we're about here as we go forward. But, but I do, I do think that we need to collect all of this information that Charlie is providing us because it's very, very helpful. So we have some idea and, and I'll throw on top of that with respect to the, particularly the new road properties, we've got a hodgepodge of people who already are receiving BPW services of uncertain age and, and quality. And, and that's not a, that's not an, I'm not saying any negative about BPW, but these, some of these services may be, may be, may be in need of updating much as we saw with Highland Acres. So I, I think it is quite a puzzle here.
It is. And it got more complicated as we got, as we got delving into these three different enclaves. And I agree with you that we need to have a better understanding. We're not in any position to make a decision here today.
Charlie, when, when Ted and I met with, with the mayor Anne Marie Wednesday on Hornkill, would there, I suggested there might be some savings if we use the same low pressure system of, on her Hornkill small diameter pipe system there. Do you see that being a possibility?
I'm gonna have to run the numbers. A little bit of the problem is, is that the pump stations, there's, you know, significant expense with each event. And then what I don't like about that is that on the, I'd have to run the numbers, but the cap, let's say the capital costs come up less if you go with the low pressure pump stations and, and small diameter force main. The capital costs may come up less, but the lifecycle cost might be the same or more because you have to maintain those pump stations over their life. I, you know, I didn't, I never liked that idea, but I mean, I really would have to run through those numbers to tell you the exact, where it exactly falls out.
Charlie, with the pump station that is presently at the end of the, at the border of the city and the county on Hornkill, as I recall, it's out in the street. Is, would that need to be upgraded or replaced? No. So you'd be able to, okay, it's adequate to support these additional 10 residences?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You know, just piggybacking a little bit on Bonnie and Andrew's comments is just another thing to remember about these projects where we're eliminating septic tanks is there is an environmental benefit to removing those septic systems.
Absolutely.
And getting all that sewage down to the board's treatment plant for, for treatment.
Yep.
Yeah.
In fact, Charlie, there was a comment that came across from Joe Huckner asking about the cost of abandoning or cleaning up those sites. Is that included in the cost estimates that you gave?
It is, yeah. For Hornkill it is, yeah.
But it wasn't for New Road and it wasn't necessarily for Savannah.
No, not for Savannah. I'm not sure about New Road because I haven't developed anything real specific on that, but.
Nothing. So that's, there's no, there's no cost there, but you've got other properties that have.
Charlie, can you take, what do you mean by cleaning up the septic systems on Hornkill? What does that mean?
So basically, all that's required is, is that you fill in the septic tank. The actual septic field, as far as I know, remains the same, but you fill in the septic tank with concrete or flowable fill. And you also have to do the same thing with their existing water well. You have to abandon it properly. Those things are relatively inexpensive, but they are part of the cost.
Right. And the field gets abandoned and correct? It's in effect just maybe.
It's just abandoned in place, yeah.
Right, right.
My vegetation grows differently, but that's all that happens.
That's another story, Ted.
I'm kind of with Bonnie. I think the thing I think we need next is a grid, like a, something organized that sort of parses out the differences between the different locations because they're drastically different situations.
Right. Yep, completely different.
Yeah, and I mean, I can see, I mean, maybe going through a percentage approach that is uniform across the enclaves as opposed to a, you know, a dollar figure. I mean, but, but without, without some, some information, we really, I don't think. I did, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off, Andrew.
No, no, I, I, I'm in full agreement, yeah.
One of the things we did talk about when we met the other day was, you know, again, press mentioned that the, the board was looking at a, a 2% interest rate to, to carry the cost of 2% interest for 20 years. And then, you know, on our side, as the mayor has said, really our only incentive is tax so that we would, you know, just again, apply that tax waiver for whatever period of time the council decides if it's seven years, seven years, so that the basic package is the same. The value of that package really is different depending on the, the costs associated with the infrastructure.
You could present, you could approach it either way, Bonnie, so that you could either take a, you know, a, a percentage of what the cost is and go that way or just offer the, you know, a flat amount as an incentive.
There's also my understanding that the Highland Acres got a 30 year at 2% and I guess that was because it was driven from the state side. Is there any flexibility on, on the part of BPW press to go from 20 to 30?
Well, our loans are typically 20 years with, with the state. So that's what, that's what we've been using. We can look at that, but I, 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 I wouldn't think we'd want to go that way.
I was, let me, let's take a minute and talk about that finance piece. In my conversation with Ted earlier this week, we talked about, or he suggested that the, that the, I'll use the word grant, but no, no, let's not use the word grant. Let's use the word the financing instrument. That that would actually be a product of the BPW and not something that would come from the state. Is in fact, is that correct? So in other words, is the BPW prepared to and able to loan, be the bank on this loan?
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, Ted, between 10. You know, we get, we get the money, but then we're paying back the state. So we're just, we're just handling and managing it for the.
Okay, but you're still dependent upon the state partic, uh, state grant program for you to be able to be that middle man. Is that correct?
Well, I think, I think the board is willing to do it on its own if we had to, but I think we'd like to get the state money if we can get it, obviously.
And it really depends upon, it also depends on the income that the households show in the area, right, press?
Yes.
So if the household income is too high, then they wouldn't qualify for the state program.
That's right.
Are, are any of the, does it matter? I don't, don't know, but are any of these properties along New Road commercial as opposed to residential? And if they're.
One, it's not a, but it's a, it's a storage facility. That's the, it's just, it's the only one. And it has, at this point, it has no utilities.
Okay.
It has electric, no water or sewer.
Ted, what about the, the dentist who has?
Bonnie's question was about New Road.
No, actually, my question was about Savannah Road.
Oh, I thought you said New.
No, no, I, I might have, but I meant whatever I said. I meant Savannah.
I heard Savannah.
Okay, whatever. Savannah Road, they already have utilities from the county at this point. Or they have water and sewer septic. That's, that's it.
But let me ask you, let me ask you, just ask the generic question. This is a question to press. If, does, does, do the state loans only involve, only, is it only residential properties that qualify for the state loans? Or is it any property?
I think it's just residential. Charlie, you deal with the state more than I do these days. Can you get commercial?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the state cares whether it's residential or commercial. And most of our projects are residential, but like in the case of Savannah Road, it would be partially residential but partially commercial.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that they care one way or the other on that part.
I think it's more about the environmental benefit.
Okay.
And again, in Savannah Road, with it being in the wellhead perfection area, I think that there is, is strong environmental benefit.
Definitely.
Well, Hornkill also because that backs up to wetlands.
Well, the way that works is you make your app, your pre-application and the state finance group will go through it along with all the other projects across the whole state that are pre-applied for. And they come up with a project priority list. And then you're always at the behest of the project priority list because they only have a certain amount of money, albeit a large amount of money, to fund projects across the state. And you just hope your project falls within the funding line after they review all the pre-applications. So you don't know whether you're going to get funding until you at least go through that pre-application process.
Right.
Charlie. Anne Marie had, Anne Marie had a good question when we were talking about Hornkill. Do you have any feel for the condition of the septic systems over there? I mean, how are the soils in that area? We're, we're close to the wetlands. What would you?
Yeah, yeah, that I, you know, I haven't checked them out. I think we, when we were talking to those people back in 14, there were some concerns about their septic systems failing and not wanting to pay. But I don't know the, the case of every single one, but you're right, you're starting to move towards the Canary Creek and, and the soils are not as good there.
I will tell you this anecdotally, that there's been at least one or two homes on Hornkill in the county that have sold during these last six years since that 2014 study that you did. And they sold. So I assume that that means that it included a septic system analysis and that they must have still been in good working order at that point in time.
Yeah, you're probably right, yeah.
But they're six years older now, you know, they may not, they may not work now. So. And obviously that's subject to an inspection that we don't do. I, I don't think we're, I think we need more information. So maybe between the BPW and Charlie, we can put together some kind of a grid that we can come back and discuss. And we can, everybody can take a look at it in advance. We can disseminate it in advance so we can have a better understanding of how we might approach this and what.
And if possible, I think it's something interesting on that grid would be what Charlie was alluding to. What I've spoken with other people about is, you know, how have those property values that have switched from one type of system over to sewer? Have they actually increased in value outside of a normal uptick that you would get anyway, based on the market? If there's possible, I don't know the real, some, if Leanne could help us on that or someone could help us and look at, you know, here's ones that have switched over and have they appreciably gone up?
I think the only, the property value, the, the community that would be best illustrative of that would possibly be Highland Acres. Because Savannah Place.
Because it did. I mean, when you look at Highland Acres.
I do, yeah.
When, when I started with the city in, in early 2017, there were a ton of houses coming on the market. And, you know, they sold quickly and some have been either torn down and rebuilt or expanded. And it, you don't even see anything turning over there anymore. I just think that it, it really allowed people to, you know, renovate their homes and then get more, have more value.
Well, that whole, the fact that that community was clouded with that idea of a failing septic system and also highly questionable water, public water distribution system really devalued that community for a long period of time. And, and also the fact that the septic systems were failing prevented any of those property owners from making any improvements. They, they could not get permits to improve their homes because the septic fields wouldn't support the additions.
Right.
Or the improvements.
So for some of the very small houses were in pretty poor condition.
Yep.
And you couldn't do renovations to add a bedroom. So.
Exactly, exactly. Yep.
We could work on information on that. So.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we've got, we've got some homework here to do, Charlie and press.
I'm just, just for my, for me, I'm just wondering, what, what is the goal of this agenda item? Like, what ultimately is your goal?
How do we incentivize the, these enclaves to come into the city? What possible incentives could be made available?
Okay. So you want to have, you want to know what the costs are and then.
Definitely.
From that, okay.
Yeah. And I, and I really think it would be helpful if we, it's going to require some grant, commitment to granular study, you know, into the increments, what makes up these different costs for each community. different costs for each community or each sector area.
Well, and to that.
Instead of a lump sum.
Yeah, to that.
Sorry?
Well, I'm just tacking onto what you're saying, Tim. I mean, it, as we get this information, it may well be that the properties arrayed along Savannah Road, and also given that the developments are going to happen out there near them, puts them in a different box than the properties arrayed along New Road, which puts, but a much different box than what'll happen with all the properties that are in the same boat, basically, at the end of Hornkill, right? Where if you do, if you do this work for one, you basically need to do it for all. So they're, they're just in very different postures, I think.
Yep, I agree, Bonnie. I think this was a good conversation. I think we're, at least now, everybody understands that there's, you know, unique circumstances in each of these areas, so.
I mean, when, when you'll maybe get to a conclusion, you know, because it kind of plays into what we're doing on New Road with the Peter litigation.
Obviously, New Road is a priority, but if we're going to try and do something for all of them, we gotta have to have a good look at this. So Charlie, what's a reasonable timeline for you?
Well, for Savannah Road, it's basically done, the cost estimate and the breakdown water sewer. And, I mean, Hornkill's done. It's in 2014 form, so it wouldn't take long to bring it up to 2020 estimate. New Road, honestly, I need to talk to press and Darren about what our approach is there because last I heard, we were kind of going back and forth of whether we were going to use pump stations or go in gravity. So we, we need to talk internally on that.
Couple of weeks reasonable for you? I mean, I think one of the questions that came up is what's the condition on Hornkill of the septic fields, septic tanks and things? Is that, and obviously wells, I mean, that may take some time to get, but we need to move on this if we're going to try to, if we need to try to use this information to make a decision.
I mean, putting, putting together the estimates for sure, two or three weeks. I don't know about, you know, surveying the homes in terms of their condition of their existing septic system and wells. I don't usually do that, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe if you come. Go ahead, Tim. I just wanted to ask a question. Has anyone approached property owners on Hornkill or Savannah in anticipation of this incentive package being put together? Has there been any dialogue at all with the people recently in the last 30 days? No, not that I'm aware of. You all had some dialogue with folks on Savannah Road, didn't you, press, when you, when you were, when you were first designing the things for Dutchman Harvest?
I think Darren had a lot, maybe Charlie too. Did you, were you involved in that, Charlie?
The only ones that I've talked to are the, the, well, it used to be the dentist office. I think it's a PT place now, but right that, you know, the first house.
Right.
And I think Darren said that he might have had interest from two or three or four others along that stretch, but I don't know about the others.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, in terms of trying to figure out the condition of their septic and their wells, we'd need the.
We need their permission.
Commission of the property owners. So, I mean, I can see getting that anecdotally, but I, or, you know, when did you put your sewer, I'm sorry, when did you put your septic in? When was the last time you replaced your, 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 your well pump? But, you know, I think that's about as far as it's going to go.
Yeah, yeah.
If people are willing to say.
Yeah. All right, let's sit down with Darren next week and work this out.
Okay.
I think I know which way we're going on New Road, but I.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, if there's nothing else to bring forward, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.